Morning, everyone. Need to better than that. Good morning.
Good morning.
It's a great day. Thank you. Thank you so much. Looks like we have a quorum. Ask the guests and visitors to retire behind a rail and we'll get started. Thank you. To give round of invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Iman Mohammed Abdul Alim of the Masjidullah, the Center for Human Excellence. He is here today as a guest of Councilman Curtis Jones. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise.
Before I give my invocation, I want to first begin, give a few comments. I want to firstly thank Councilman Jones for the invitation to come. Let me also thank my councilwoman, Sherrell Parker, because she's one of my favorite warriors. We have fought many battles together to help the good of society. Also, I want to acknowledge my brother, Councilman, Council President Darrell Clark, whom we from the neighborhood are extremely proud of, to see one of our own become such an elegant statesman. As I said to him, great leaders is those who know that leadership is in the resourceful people. The more you can get people to work, to do the thing that they are obligated to do, the better leader you are. And lastly, let me thank all of you, the council, for welcoming the Muslim, our community, to these chambers last week. It has been our hope that our community present itself as a viable part of the American society. We look forward to working with you on the recognition of the ease and other common interests. For as my daughter, who is the Associate Counsel General for President Obama says, she is Abba, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. All right? So, we want to be at the table, working to help solve the problems of the city and make it sure that we don't experience social rejection. So, I want to say again, thank you. And with that, let me now give my invocation. Merciful Lord, the benefactor and redeemer of all, who opens for all people a way to good consciousness and a good life, grant to this council that it continue to serve the people of this city, taking pride in human dignity, industry, and service. Let us pray that this council be an inspiration to this, to this city and to other city councils, this nation, to move forward towards social and economic justice for all. Grant that this council always have the human heart for charity, compassion, repentance, and mercy for the weak and less fortunate among us. Grant that we as human beings always move with more hope than trouble and ever grow in goodness and wisdom. Let us always cherish our freedom and the noble essence of our common human form. Grant that we as citizens understand better our brothers and sisters in the neighborhoods and around the world, and reject unsuitable racism for a human society of brotherhood and peace. Bless us as citizens to live up to the noble name of the city, the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. Bless us in this city of neighborhoods to return the neighbor back to the hood. Bless us to establish our city as the city of safety and security for all its citizens. Bless our city workers, both those in uniform and those out of uniform. Bless our schools and our homes. Bless us that all citizens and government together, those of great means and small means, to appreciate more our city and our common life together. Bless the parents. Bless our troubled youth. Bless our schools, our burdened neighborhoods, to never be without hope or direction. Bless us as neighbors to keep to the best of our ways. Bless us to cherish more the pride of industry and self-reliance. Bless the efforts of this council and all other efforts as we move forward for more opportunity, more jobs, more, more human life in this great city for all of us. Bless marriage and family life here and throughout the world. Bless us to understand the great time in which we live, the time of the human being. Increase for the council president and for every member of this council and for the leaders of this city, the excellence of the human spirit, the excellence of the intellect of statesmen, so that they may build a better world for us all. With that, I now close. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Iman, for those inspiring words. Quiet, please. Thank you all very much. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 21st, 2016, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 21st, 2016 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second. That the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 21st, 2016 stand approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes haven't, and the Journal is approved. Next order of business is request for leaves of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has come down and taken time out of your busy day to come down and witness your government in action. We really appreciate the fact that you've come to see democracy in action. We hope you actually enjoy yourself so much that you come back again. So, again, thank you all for coming down. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla, who presented a resolution on my behalf, recognizing Patrick Kane Senior. With Patrick Kane Senior and those accompanying him, please come up to the podium. And joining Councilman Squilla, we have Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez and Councilman Greenlee.
Hey, guys.
Good morning, everyone. And this resolution is important, honoring the partnerships that we have with communities and what they mean to the growth of our city, and the effort and the volunteerism that goes a long way to making our city such a great place. And today, we're honoring and recognizing, congratulating Patrick Kane Senior for over forty years of service to the Fishtown Athletic Club and the Greater Fishtown and River Ward communities. Whereas Patrick Kane Senior, Pat, is the in-house director of the Fishtown Athletic Club located in the Schistler Recreation Center at 1800 Blair Street. Since the club's inception, had organized children in the Fishtown neighborhood to compete in baseball, basketball, softball, and soccer leagues currently serving kids ages from three to seventeen. Whereas, Pat is also known for running We Care Soccer Camp, a week-long camp that takes place every summer where children ages three to eleven can learn different soccer skills. The campers play on the, on Stan the Cut Man Field, a 2,800-square-foot artificial turf field named in memory of Stanley Maluski. Maluski, sorry about that, Stanley. A Fishtown firefighter who helped start the camp with Pat. And...
Whereas, Pat, our neighborhood hero, led the initiative to create a complex, discovering a way to fund the project by selling personalized bricks to residents that line the outside of the field. And whereas, the project also includes a new dog park and a passive park area, which will provide residents with benches, trees, walking paths for the community to enjoy. And whereas, beginning in 1994, the camp encouraged kids in the River Ward to play to their fullest potential. Each camper receives a free breakfast and lunch daily, along with a T-shirt, soccer ball, and a bag that are either donated or bought from the funds raised by the community.
Whereas, besides soccer, Pat teaches the attendees of the camp life skills and the importance of giving back to your community. Once a child turns twelve, they are eligible to come back and help coach the younger campers for the next few years. And whereas, We Care Soccer Camp is a legacy that Pat is passing down to younger generations of Fishtowners and River Ward residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor, recognize, and congratulate Patrick Kane Senior for over forty years of service to the Fishtown Athletic Club and the Greater Fishtown and River Ward communities.
Chair recognizes Mr. Kane for remarks.
I thank you for this award today because it's something. What I do is for the kids in the community. I've been doing this back in 1963 over at Hancock Playground started. So, I thank everybody. I thank the councilmen, everybody here today, and these are all the people, my family and things, and I thank you. Thank you.
Councilor Beedeez.
Go down there, we'll take a picture. Take a picture with our council, all right?
Thank you so much. The next order of business is, oh, before I say that, I would like to ask if anyone has a cellphone or any type of electronic device that makes noise. I ask that you please turn it, I guess on airplane mode, or whatever that is. Bottom line, please turn it off so it doesn't ring while we're in the council session. Thank you so much. At this time, Chair requested the side of arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages from the mayor?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the Second Councilmanic District that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank in accordance with terms of Chapter 16, 700 of the Philadelphia Code, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one resolution this morning, co-sponsored by Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to conduct public hearings to examine the Philadelphia School Reform Commission's approval process as it pertains to the composition, qualifications, and diversity of a charter school applicant's Board of Trustees.
That will be on next week's final passage calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce one resolution that is co-sponsored, non-privileged, by Helen Gimm, Kenyatta Johnson, Derek Green, Alan Dom, Cindy Bass, Blondie Reynolds, Blondelle Reynolds Brown, sorry, and, and then signed by the other members of council.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Joint City Council Committees on Education and Housing Neighborhood Development and the Homeless to hold public hearings to examine the feasibility of having a pilot program in Philadelphia to feed needy children when schools are closed due to emergencies.
That will be on this week's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer three bills and two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance authorizing Roland Cassis to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 1204 Frankfurt Avenue, and an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 1100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance, Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination, by adding a section prohibiting employers from obtaining or using credit-related information regarding, regarding employees and job applicants in certain circumstances, and an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning, by adding a new subsection entitled Rittenhouse Square Residential Area and Making Related Changes.
Those bills will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And a privileged resolution recognizing and declaring February 9, 2016, as Connections for Cardiovascular Health Awareness Day, encouraging citizens to promote cardiovascular health.
And that will be on this week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds, convey additional fees, simple title, setting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon, situated in the 37th and 43rd wards of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I have two bills on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Title 22 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Employees Retirement Code by amending Section 22, 301 entitled Service Retirement Benefits and Section 22, 401 entitled Service Connected Disability Retirement Benefits, to add new subsections requiring a specified minimum monthly benefit amount for certain retired police employee members.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And an ordinance amending Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code by amending Subcode A of the Philadelphia Administrative Code, providing for the posting and public notice of the demolition of structures and making related changes.
And bill will also be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions and three non-privileged resolutions, and the three non-privileged resolutions are signed by all members of council.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Education and the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Children and Youth to hold joint hearings examining recent instances of school bus lateness in the school district of Philadelphia and the detrimental effects school bus lateness has on students.
This week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Council Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings regarding the establishment of a comprehensive strategy for reducing and eliminating youth gun violence.
Also in this week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the United States Department of Justice to conduct a complete and thorough investigation of the water supply disaster in Flint, Michigan that may have exposed 99,763 people to lead poisoning.
That will be on next week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the Second Councilmanic District that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank in accordance with terms of Chapter 16, 700 of the Philadelphia Code.
That will be on next week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds, convey additional fees, simple title, setting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon, located in the 36th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will also be in next week's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I have a resolution, a privileged resolution co-sponsored by Councilwoman Gimm, Blackwell, and Bass.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution urging the President of the United States to establish a comprehensive national policy regarding our undocumented immigrants that seeks to preserve and protect families that have fled to this country from situations of widespread violence and deprivation, and to also prevent future deportation raids that tear apart our communities.
That will be on next week's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution co-sponsored by Councilmembers Gimm, Dom, Jones, Johnson, and Brown.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring, recognizing, and celebrating the 30th Black Engineers of the Year Awards STEM Conference.
And that will be on this week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions for introduction today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution co-sponsored by you and all members of council, and I'd like to request the opportunity to speak on this resolution prior to the motion for adoption.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing January 29, 2016, as Earned Income Tax Credit, EITC Awareness Day in Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom. I'll say it after he speaks.
Want to speak now?
Yes, please.
I'd like to take a moment to thank my colleagues and encourage their support, as together we must continue to work to raise awareness for the Earned Income Tax Credit. Also, I want to acknowledge the City's Revenue Department, Urban Affairs Coalition, campaign for working families for all their efforts involving the Earned Income Tax Credit. Its commonly-held position that the best way to lift the working poor out of poverty is the expansion of the Earned Income Tax Credit. Philadelphia's poverty rate stands around 26%, and it's been stubbornly above 20% for decades. Philadelphia has the highest poverty rate of any major city in America, and that is just unacceptable for us. We must work together as a body and with the administration and our external partners to address this very important issue. And what we as a government, especially at the local level, and as fellow citizens, can do today is to better promote this incentive to our neighbors. Here are the facts: 40,000 eligible Philadelphians do not apply, and that leaves approximately $100 million on the table in Washington, DC. Average refund's 2,400; the maximum refund is 6,000. You can also file back three years. This is real money. The deadline to file this year is April 18, 2016. It's the serious money that people are owed, and it's never received for the simple reason that they just never applied. This money could help many families and could go towards stimulating Philadelphia's overall economy. I've heard from citizens and experts that some barriers have caused the lack of participation, and we will work with all stakeholders to address them. We must raise awareness, discredit misinformation, increase access to resources, and expand and diversify communication and marketing. To learn more about resources available, please contact the City's Revenue Department or my council office or any council office. And lastly, I want to remind our business community of its existing obligation to inform all employees of the Earned Income Tax Credit. Let's work together. And with that said, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Councilman, that's, thank you. That's actually going to be a little later on the agenda, so we'll make your motion at the time. But that will be on this week's final passage calendar. And I'll call you for a motion. Thank you, Councilman. Very, very important issue, leaving a lot of money on the table. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I'd like to introduce one non-privileged resolution and one privileged resolution. I request to speak briefly on the non-privileged resolution.
A privileged resolution proclaiming, recognizing, honoring, and observing February 1 through 5, 2016, as National School Counseling Week in the City of Philadelphia.
That will be on this week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Children and Youth and the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to conduct hearings concerning best practices followed by the Philadelphia Water Department, as well as additional measures to prevent lead exposure due to household water service lines.
Thank you. That will be on this week's final passage calendar. Councilwoman, you wanted to speak at the time of...
Just at the time of the vote.
At the most.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Taltenberger.
Thank you, Council President and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills...
No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I offer one non-privileged resolution co-sponsored by Councilmen Derek Green, Councilwoman Cindy Bass, and Councilman Mark Squilla.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to legislate a state/local preference for contracting processes involving entities using state and local government funds.
And that will be on next week's final passage calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. There are no reports from committee today, so before considering the resolutions that we have for today, we will consider public comment as follows. If there is any one -- I'm sorry. Sorry. These pages are sticking together. We will now consider the calendar. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. There being no bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill numbers 160034, 160039, 160043, 160048, 160050, and 160058. All other resolutions are being held.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Now, before considering the bills and resolution that we have on our final passage calendar today, we will have our public comment session. Public comment session will go as follows. If we have a bill or resolution on the calendar today that you are prepared to speak on, if you have not already done so, I'd ask that you sign it at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council session. There's a device on that podium. There's a light. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Mr. Decker, would you please call the first name?
Charmaine Matlock Turner. Commenting on Councilman Dom's EITC Day Resolution.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Charmaine Matlock Turner. I'm the president and CEO of the Urban Affairs Coalition, and I'm here to thank council, Council President Clark, and certainly Councilman Dom, and all the members of council who are recognizing tomorrow as National Earned Income Tax Credit Day. This is vital work that's being done in our city, and we have a campaign to help us get to making sure that we find those 40,000 families that have not yet filed for the Earned Income Tax Credit. For those of you who may remember, we came here in '03 to begin to kick off this campaign. At that point, we had about 200 volunteers, and we were able to bring back $10 million to the City of Philadelphia. I'm proud to say that last year, we filed over 24,643 returns, and with the help of 528 IRS-trained volunteers, we bought back more than $34 million to hard-working Philadelphians. And for these almost 25,000 Philadelphians, it meant that they had no fees for having their taxes filed, they paid no check cashing fees, it put food on the table, gas for people to go to work, cash spent with local businesses, a savings bond, maybe a first bank account, less debt, more savings, and money to go to college. This is a real important program. It is considered one of the most important anti-poverty efforts in our country. Again, I want to thank council very much for supporting this. I want to thank Mary Arthur, her team at Campaign for Working Families, which is one of the wonderful programs, one of the 60 programs at the Urban Affairs Coalition, for making this a central part of the work here in Philadelphia. Ending poverty matters. Getting money to low-income, hard-working families is critical if we're ultimately going to help people move out of poverty. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to talk about this wonderful effort and tell others. Please tell those 40,000 people, come and get your money. It matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, and thank you for your continued good work.
Mary Arthur. Commenting on Councilman Dom's EITC Day Resolution.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd first like to thank Councilman Dom for moving this mission forward, President Darrell Clark, and all of city council. My name is Mary Arthur. I'm the executive director of the Campaign for Working Families. We are the largest vida provider in the City of Philadelphia, as well as the state. We are also the most successful. Last year, we provided services to over 25,000 families. We bought back over $35 million in refunds. The goal of the campaign is to push this mission forward, but it's teamwork. We're very happy that the Revenue Department has become a partner of ours. We have partners for the past 13 years. We look at the IRS for all of our tax law, compliance, training, and certifications. All taxpayers that work at any of our sites and volunteers must be IRS-certified. So I get a little passionate, and I hope you'll forgive me for this. This is a very serious issue. Partnerships are so important to the work that we do. Funding is paramount, because we can't do it. It is free. It is a free service to the taxpayers and the residents of the City of Philadelphia. It is not a free service. So we have to continue to look for the funding to be able to provide this service. Last year, there was over 188,000 families in Philadelphia that had their taxes prepared. The majority of them, of course, paid. That's $600, $700 that is going to a paid preparer. We need to make sure that they can keep their tax credits, all their credits, in their pocket. I know what I can do with $600, $700, and I'm sure there are families out there that can pay rent, buy food, electric. But I also want to talk about teamwork. It is a partnership with longstanding partners. United Way of Greater Philadelphia and Southern New Jersey have been a partner of ours for the past 13 years. Three years ago, we were on the brink of dissolving, and they came to the table to help us. And from that year to now, that year we did 12,000 returns. This year, last year, we were at 25. This year, our goal is to reach over 30,000 families in the City of Philadelphia. And we hope that everyone in here will pass the word to help us move this mission forward. We know that there's another reception tomorrow in the mayor's office, but we have also prepared a signature event for the City of Philadelphia, and each year we hope to grow it. We train over 700 volunteers. This Saturday, we're hoping to provide service to over 300 families at the Free Library of Philadelphia. This is in partnership with the United Way of Philadelphia. But all of our dollars are leveraged, so we need help from all the funders, we need help from city government, we need help from the marketing community, because we don't have the dollars to put the commercials out there. But our services are valuable, our services are free, our services are accurate. Everybody that does a tax return or assists a client is certified through the IRS. So I am greatly appreciative of this opportunity, and I hope that collectively we can push this forward and get the other 40,000 families into one of our tax sites. Right now, we have 17 running. We start it Monday. We're all over the city, and I got you. So, thank you.
Wrap it up. Thank you. Councilwoman, you want to make a motion for the suspension?
activist today, so I'm going to ask that my ICE resolution be a suspension of rules so that it could be heard today as a final passage.
It's been moved in property second that the resolution have a suspension of the rules to allow reading today, and that would allow public comment today.
Yes.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. That will be on today's final passage calendar.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Joe Denatell. Commenting on 160034.
Back here again.
Good morning.
Good morning. Haven't heard anything from anybody here. At this time, I am without my house at 1038 West Wyoming due to egregious actions and inactions by this legislative body. I quote George Mason, delegate to the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia. Can anyone be above the law? Truer words were never spoke by a founding father than the sacred cradle of liberty. He and the other founding fathers were concerned about the potential abuse of power in governments that may sacrifice, so they passed laws. Every person who, having knowledge of any laws conspired to be done, mentioned sections above this title, are about to be committed or having the power to prevent or aid or prevent the commission of the same neglects and refuses to do so. If the wrongful act should be committed, shall be liable to the party injured, me, or is legal representative if reasonable diligence could have prevented this act. This is 42 U.S.C. 1986. I read from an article, Melissa Drebin, Philadelphia.com. "The site where sinking homes in Logan had languished for over a decade. A field of unfulfilled dreams developers have envisioned in profitable malls. Residences have pictured the supermarket. And a local councilwoman, Marion Tesco, has fantasized about a string of pearly, high-end designer outlets. As in the words of Eleanor Roosevelt in 1941, 'I am one of the free and unconquerable people of the United States of America, even though my enemies are not foreign but domestic.'" These articles and previous submissions require immediate defunding and investigation of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority or before more laws, as in the above previously mentioned, are violated by you, the agents and agencies of the government. And now do we notify on December 3, 2015? You are in this member of the people's opinion accessories after the fact. You've taken an oath to obey, support, and defend the Constitution and laws. Now, let's get to work.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Commenting on Councilwoman Sanchez's ICE resolution introduced today and on today's final passage calendar.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maria Tercios. Soy organizadora comunitaria del Movimiento Nuevo Santuario. Y estamos muy contentos de estar aquí hoy trabajando con ustedes en esta introducción de esta resolución en contra de las redadas de inmigración hacia los inmigrantes. Mostrando con esto que ustedes nos apoyan, que no apoyan esas leyes injustas por personas que solo ven sus propios intereses aunque con ellos estén visoteando la dignidad de los demás.
Good morning. My name is Maria Tercios. I'm a community organizer at New Sanctuary Movement of Philadelphia. We're very happy to work with you all in introducing a resolution against the deportation raids, showing that you all don't support these unjust laws created by politicians who are only pushing their own interests and ruining the dignity of others' lives.
Tenemos muchos cleros de diferentes denominaciones, las cuales están apoyándonos también. Sabemos con esto que Philadelphia es una ciudad que da la bienvenida a los inmigrantes y está en contra de estas redadas.
We also have 275 clergy that are supporting us in the fight against the deportations, and we know that this shows that Philadelphia is a city that does not welcome deportation raids.
Yo soy hondureña y vivo aquí por 22 años y esa es la razón por la que sé qué es lo que pasa en los países centroamericanos, en donde las familias vienen hacia acá porque están sufriendo mucha persecución, mucha violencia. En mi caso, hace tres años, mataron uno de mis sobrinos. Es algo que es el día de hoy y todavía nos sigue afectando grandemente.
I'm Honduran, and I've lived here for 22 years, and that's why I know the persecution and violence that people are fleeing in Central America. Just three years ago, my nephew was killed, and that's how I know what's affecting refugee families today.
Estamos diciendo hoy no a las redadas porque esa gente que ha venido aquí es buscando protección para sus hijos, es buscando una mejor vida, y nosotros venimos a trabajar fuerte para salir adelante y dar apoyo aquí a este país.
So that's why we're here today, to say no to the deportation raids, because people have come fleeing from violence and persecution and seeking more safety for their families, and we've come to work hard.
Muchas gracias.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, we will now consider the resolutions. And on the second reading and final passage calendar, Mr. Decker, I would ask you to read the title 160034.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 32nd Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution 160034 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160039.
A resolution authorizing the appointment of a chief ethics officer for the council of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and resolution 160039 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160043.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 31st Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman McKiernan Sanchez.
Can I speak on it before we?
Pardon me?
Can I speak on this? Oh, no, the other resolution. I'm sorry. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and resolution 160043 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160048.
A resolution authorizing the creation of a special committee on student loan debt to evaluate the impacts of student loan debt upon individual borrowers and the subsequent effect on the City of Philadelphia.
And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and resolution 160048 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160050.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 31st Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and resolution 160050 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160058.
A resolution respectfully requesting the Prime Minister of Israel, the Honorable Benjamin Netanyahu, to maintain and support the Foreign Ministry of Israel's diplomatic mission in the United States by retaining the consulate general of Israel to the Mid-Atlantic region in Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. Could I be heard on this briefly?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to recognize that joining us today is Michael Alexander, the Director of Governmental Affairs and Press for the Consulate General of Israel, to the Mid-Atlantic region, which is located here in Philadelphia. Would you rise, sir?
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Philadelphia has but three consulates located in our city. We have honorary consulates, but we only have three official consulates that function. And one of them, the Israeli consulate, has been a very important part of the relationship between the City of Philadelphia and the nation of Israel. Philadelphia has the second-largest Jewish population on the East Coast, the fifth-largest Indian-- in the United States, and in 2011, the total impact of Israel on the greater Philadelphia region's economy was about $1.6 billion. And that included a minimum of $714 million in economic activities generated by Israeli firms. We would really urge the Prime Minister to not close the consulate of Israel here in Philadelphia. I think the population that it serves, the citizen it serves, and the Philadelphians in this region and in the Mid-Atlantic region is very large and has been a great benefit to us and to Israel. And with that, I appreciate the consideration and I thank our members for being so engaged in economic activities and cultural exchange. And at this time, I would ask that the motion, the resolution, be adopted so that we could send an official message to the Prime Minister.
Thank you. It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and resolution 160058 is adopted. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to conduct public hearings to examine the Philadelphia School Reform Commission's approval process as it pertains to the composition, qualification, and diversity of a charter school applicants board of trustees introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Joint City Council Committees on Education and Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to hold public hearings to examine the feasibility of having a pilot program in Philadelphia to feed needy children when schools are closed due to emergencies, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and declaring February 9, 2016, as Connections for Cardiovascular Health Awareness Day, encouraging citizens to promote cardiovascular health, introduced by Councilman Greenly on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Education and the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Children and Youth to hold joint hearings examining recent instances of school bus lateness in the School District of Philadelphia and the detrimental effects school bus lateness has on students, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings regarding the establishment of a comprehensive strategy for reducing and eliminating youth gun violence, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to make a brief statement regarding the resolution. You know, each day when I watch the news after I arrive home and tuck my son in bed, there's always an incidence of some African-American youth shot down here in the streets in the City of Philadelphia. And so this has always been an issue that's near and dear to my heart. But I also believe as a city, as a council body, that we can make this a greater priority as related to the issue of youth gun violence. During the last year, during the prior administration, we have seen a significant spike in the increases of youth gun violence throughout the city. And so these hearings will allow us to look at a comprehensive strategy specifically on the issue of prevention, but also finding innovative ways such as initiative that you kicked off yesterday that provide young men who are returning home from prison an opportunity to pick up a shovel and focus on the issue of blight as opposed to picking up a gun. And so I ask for the support of all my colleagues. And hopefully, each of us who are individual council members will make a priority on the issue of youth gun violence in their own respective districts. And so this will be a collaborative effort with the body as a whole to look at how can we really have a significant impact on the issue of youth gun violence here in the City of Philadelphia. I move for the adoption of the resolution, Council President.
Thank you. It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is enthusiastically adopted.
And a resolution urging the President of the United States to establish a comprehensive national policy regarding our undocumented immigrants that seeks to preserve and protect families that have fled to this country from situations of widespread violence and deprivation, and to also prevent future deportation raids that tear apart our communities, introduced by Councilwoman Kianah Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kianah Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. And I will also briefly speak on this before I ask for a motion. Fear. Fear does not lead us to public safety and it will not protect our city and it will not protect our country. Fear. Fear is what thousands of families who live in their native countries under extreme violence feel every single day. Fear is what the refugees, many who risk their lives, many who die on that pathway, seek an asylum into the United States. I want to thank the councils who has consistently been a voice in calling to the national attention the need for comprehensive immigration reform. We want to recognize the historic coalition of hundreds of clergy who've lent their voices to the need for Obama's administration and the Homeland Department to stop what we know to be inhumane ICE raids throughout the country. We want to join the 20 senators who this week called on the President to use his executive authority to stop this. Senators Booker and Menendez from across New Jersey lending their voice to this. And finally, we want to thank Mayor Kenny, who in one of his first acts as mayor reaffirmed the position of Philadelphia being a sanctuary city, a city where police, stakeholders, and government believe it is our human obligation to protect refugees and people who feel fear for their lives. So I want to thank Councilwoman Gimm for lending her voice and support for the work that we continue to do in this council, Councilwoman Blackwell, who's been a consistent supporter, Councilwoman Bass, and all of city council. And I call on the adoption of this resolution.
Thank you. Before we take that vote, chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've worked with the National League of Cities for years on comprehensive immigration reform, and I know it's a very difficult issue. It's emotional, needs balance. There's not a right side on one end and a right side on the other. It's somewhere in the middle. As I was looking at this resolution today and deciding whether to sign it or vote for it and/or vote for it, you know, I got down to the last part that says, "Prevent future deportation raids," that last part of the paragraph. And I don't go as far as the mayor. We didn't vote on sanctuary city in the city council. I would have voted no if it went so far as it does that it protects people on terror watch lists, Homeland Security, and the White House wants to work with us to remove from our community. And I will not be voting for this because I just think it goes too far when it predetermines that all deportation raids are bad. Because if there's a terrorist raid or a raid involving terrorists, I want to make sure that I voted that that was okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I understand and thank Councilwoman Sanchez, and I think one of the most honorable parts of being part of the city council body is the opportunity to weigh in on issues that not only have local importance but national importance as well. The crisis around the Central American refugees is a crisis that's been recognized by human rights agencies as being one of global proportions and is one of the biggest migration movements we've seen in the Western Hemisphere in a long period of time. The biggest concern that I have, obviously, is that there are thousands of unaccompanied minors. A report in this week's Washington Post demonstrated that the U.S. is completely incapable of handling this in terms of its traditional immigration, deportation, and incarceration tactics. And as a result, many of these young people may be turned over to traffickers, to slavers in the United States of America on our watch. I think that this statement and the establishment and clarification of what it means to be a sanctuary city is not about knee-jerk responses. It's not about taking massive worldwide situations and condemning people to a criminal and incarcerating and deporting them without any means or any responsible amount of thinking to a major crisis. This is not going to end. This is going to continue. And I think that what council is trying to do today is to send a clear message to DC, which has failed time and time again to establish responsible immigration reform, that we are here to protect our citizens, we're here especially to protect our children, we're going to have a voice in it, this is the city where it matters. We deal with the failures of DC. We deal with the failures of Harrisburg. We're trying to find smart solutions. And this is a letter and a message to DC that we're paying attention and we care about our people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many of you know, we have thousands and thousands, 30,000 to 50,000 African and Caribbean immigrants here. I think the majority of the city live in my area. And we, after some, over 10 years ago, we established the Mayor's Commission on African and Caribbean Immigrant Affairs, and some 18 or 19 years ago now, we established Echoes of Africa. So we hear these and are aware of so many sad stories. We represent 35 countries already. And I will tell you without fear of contradiction that this is very, very important legislation that we all should support it, support it, and that we are always supportive of those things that deal with safety and quality of life for everybody. This is, after all, American. We have the lady who stands in a harbor welcoming people here. So we're happy to support this legislation and hope that everyone else will as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, great presidents said, "We have nothing to fear but fear itself." That's changed since 9/11, of course, but what we cannot do, what we will not do, is change our quality of life and the words that ring out on the Statue of Liberty, which is, "Bring me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to be free." The minute that we put up a sign that says, "No one else is allowed, we are closing our doors," they win. And we have to do what we have to do to secure our borders, we have to do to keep the homeland secure, but we cannot change our way of life, we cannot change our principles of wanting people who are fleeing oppression from coming here. So today, I support this legislation and stand by that credo that we established early in this country's life. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. There has been a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and then the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring, recognizing, and celebrating the 30th Black Engineers of the Year Awards STEM Conference, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing January 29, 2016, as Earned Income Tax Credit, EITC Awareness Day in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Don.
Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution proclaiming, recognizing, honoring, and observing February 1 through 5, 2016, as National School Counseling Week in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution was sponsored by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown and Councilman Green, and I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Children and Youth and the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to conduct hearings concerning the best practices followed by the Philadelphia Water Department, as well as additional measures to prevent lead exposure due to household water service lines, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This resolution was sponsored by council members Blackwell, Kianah Sanchez, Reynolds Brown, and Green, and permission to make a few remarks.
Please do.
Thank you. I want to explain and assure to my colleagues the importance of having some level of hearings at this time. I want to assure my colleagues first and foremost that this hearing will be done in partnership with the Water Department, whom we have been in dialogue with already over the text of the resolution. But there is no question right now that the urgency and the national attention that has driven to the state of water and lead in our city and in cities across the nation is something that is capturing the national dialogue and is very much a part of it. I want to thank all my colleagues who have been working diligently on this issue for decades. And a special shout-out to my colleague, Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, who has been a true champion on this issue. I also want to thank Councilman Johnson's clear and beautifully-written resolution on the human rights abuses in Flint, Michigan. It is important for us to work very closely with the Water Department to bring clarity to this issue about what is happening in our city, that they are following best practices, that this is not Flint, but that we have a lot of information that we need to bring to the public, primarily to our families who don't often get it through traditional channels and means. We have responsibility to reach out to our immigrant families, and this hearing should be able to do that. So I ask my colleagues for the adoption of this resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our calendar. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to thank all the members of city council for signing a letter that we will be sending to SEPTA regarding the issue that arose last week, which is a matter of whether or not local hiring preferences will be included in RFPs, and in particular, to support jobs and vendors and commerce here in Philadelphia and in Pennsylvania. I'm sorry, here in Philadelphia and in Pennsylvania. At stake are 350 jobs directly and indirectly, 5,000 jobs. I just wanted to share with the public some of the demographics of this company, which we know, and we don't know about the other companies that are involved, but we know that currently Hyundai Rotem has a demographic that 37.7% of its workforce is Caucasian, 23.4% is African-American, 14.3% is Hispanic, and 14.3% is Asian. That's in 2016. In 2012, 38.9% were Caucasian, 24.2% were African-American, 13.2% were Hispanic, and 15.3% were Asian-American. The numbers have been pretty consistent in terms of the percentages of hirees with families sustaining wages. What is different is at the high point, there were 350 workers working directly for Hyundai Rotem, and today, there are 77. It is critical, if this company is going to survive here in Philadelphia and we're going to manufacture high-speed trains at a time where revenues appear to be coming into our city and other cities for infrastructure, transportation, infrastructure, that we ensure that if there is a legal way to provide a hiring preference to the RFP, that that be done. One of the critical issues that arises is the extent to which advocacy for local hiring preferences will be pursued. They do it in New York, they're doing it in California. And so combined with the resolution that calls upon our state to establish a statewide manufacturing preference, these issues should help our state and our population to have employment and the revenues we need to support our schools, our local government, and our communities. So I thank everyone here, and I'd like to say that this body, this council body, has been a champion of jobs and employment for all demographics in and around Philadelphia, and I'm very proud of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Remarks from the majority?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. At this moment, I would like to offer my remarks, focus my thoughts, and lend my voice of support.
focus my thoughts, and lend my voice of support also to the citizens and more importantly, the children of Flint, Michigan. Here is why. As has already been alluded, in December, forgive me, in November, the citizens filed a class-action lawsuit against their governor, city-state governments, for the highly toxic levels of lead found in Flint's water supply that has been poisoning those residents for over two years. As Chair of City Council's Committee on the Environment and Sustainability, I pay close attention to this issue. And I join the Environmental Protection Agency, Clean Water Action, the American Civil Liberties Union, the Natural Resource Defense Council, and so many other social and environmental organizations across the country in demanding justice and swift action from the governor first, and then to the government to address this Katrina-type disaster we witness every day in Flint, Michigan. Here's the background. Like many municipalities facing extreme budget constraints, the city of Flint changed its water source from Lake Huron to the Flint River as a temporary cost-cutting measure. Bad judgment. The acidity of the water from the Flint River corroded pipes, allowing dangerous levels of lead to leak into the water supply. Tap water turned to a strange color, and tests showed lead levels rose 10 times higher than years before. The short-term and long-term health ramifications of this gross negligence are staggering at best and criminal at worst. One local hospital, a woman, by the way, found that the percentage of Flint children with elevated lead levels doubled, leading to health effects such as skin lesions, hair loss, vision loss, memory loss, depression, and anxiety. Even more tragic are the long-term effects of lead poisoning, which damages and affects fertility, our kidneys, the nervous system, the cardiovascular system and circulation. For sure, a child's behavior, digestion, their bones, muscle are only a part of the list. Colleagues, you may recall, as has been shared, that in year 2010, I worked closely with Shelley Anoff, took great guidance from Councilwoman Maria Kianana Sanchez and Councilwoman Tasco. And we tackled the issue of lead in apartment dwellings here in our city. You may recall, our biggest opponent at that time in this legislative journey was HABCO. But for over a year, the leadership and membership of HABCO and myself sat down and figured out painstakingly how we could tackle this important, ugly health issue. I was proud to work with Homeowners Association of Philadelphia on bill number 10011-A, a lead paint disclosure ordinance that is now law. In fact, if you are in an apartment, someone seeking an apartment, it is now standard protocol, what we call standard operating procedure, for potential renters to get a lead disclosure brochure. The process was long, sometimes unfriendly. However, after layered acts of diplomacy, tweaking the bill to the best we could, we drafted and won a win-win outcome. Why? Because everyone in that dialogue fully recognized what mattered most. The number-one priority was the health and safety of our fellow citizens, our families, and our children. And children, the effects are so much worse. It affects the nervous system, impairs their growth and development, cognitive development forever, behavior, hearing, sight, mobility, and their digestive system. The lives of those children are changed forever. The sadness of this frightening reality is that the potential health consequences of this disaster for many of those children will be realized decades from now. The government of Flint, Michigan failed its citizens. It is imperative that residents get justice for the government's wrongdoing. Current investigations by the United States Attorney's Office and the American Civil Liberties Union in Michigan are a step in the right direction. The most ugly aspect of this debacle that turns my gut is that the victims of this tragedy are primarily minority and primarily low-income citizens. I question what the action may have been if the citizens had not been majority-minority or majority-low-income citizens. In closing, I salute and stand with my colleagues, Councilman Johnson, who eloquently shared with us how important it is to call on the United States Department of Justice to conduct a complete and thorough investigation of the water supply. And I stand with Councilwoman Gimm as we put this issue back on the radar screen with the Water Department and work in a collaborative fashion with the administration. This Katrina deja vu reads like the script of a fictional movie. The reality is that it's a real-life circumstance for an American city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown and Councilwoman Helen Gimm for speaking on this issue. And the presentation and the remarks were so eloquently said by Councilwoman Brown that I want to refrain from my remarks, but only mention that the actions that have taken place in Flint, Michigan is absolutely criminal. You know, Dr. King once said, "What affects one directly impacts all indirectly." And it's just shameful that us living in a country as great as America that something like this can happen. And there isn't any major outrage, major outrage on a national level, to be quite frank with you. After you do the research on what's taking place in Flint, Michigan, and it clearly shows that those government officials, rather than covering up emails, had an opportunity to address this issue on the front end, and they didn't. And so for me, that's criminal. And the sad part about this is that in the long term, those young people who are impacted, they don't get a second chance. There's no coming back from that. And so, you know, hopefully, on a national level, there will be some type of legal action that does take place. And they take heed that the city of Philadelphia, the city of brotherly love, assistly affection, and the credo of liberty for all of our cities are paying attention. And so I wanted to state that for the record. This evening, at St. Patrick's Church, located at 242 South 20th Street, I will be hosting a public safety meeting regarding the Forlawn fire that took place at 2122 Locust Street. So we will have the current Fire Commissioner, Richard Sawyer, who's going to be there, Judge Renee Caldwell Hughes from the American Red Cross, Senator Larry Farnazy will be in attendance, as well as the Office of Emergency Management and the captain from the 9th Police District to find out ways on how we can support the residents who suffered a fire that displaced them from their living conditions. And so that's going to be this evening at 7:00 p.m. again at St. Patrick's Church. Also today, most of you in here who know my platform, my agenda, know that I'm strong on addressing the issue of affordable and workforce housing throughout my second councilman of the district, but specifically in the area of Point Breeze. Point Breeze is on a come-up, a very changing community right now. But I always try to address a level of balance as we look at the issue of development and gentrification. And so today, I have moved a total of 139 properties into the land bank to focus on the issue of affordable workforce housing, more green space in the neighborhood, making sure that long-term residents have an option of staying in their homes, but even new residents. Because every new resident doesn't have a checkbook or pocketbook. You have some new residents who want to move in and purchase affordable and workforce housing. And so we will continue adding more properties to the land bank. And again, I thank you, Council President, and I thank the author and the champion of the land bank, Councilwoman Sanchez, for bringing the land bank to the city of Philadelphia. Because it definitely helps us as we look at a balanced approach to development throughout our district. And I always say for the record, for those who are blogging and those who will actually review my statements on development. Yes, I'm for development, but I'm for smart development. And for me, that's affordable workforce, senior housing. And we support market rate as well. But we just want to make sure in certain parts of my district that gentrifying, there's a balanced approach to development, and everyone has a chance to live in the neighborhood regardless of their check and/or pocketbook. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Very important issue. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Mr. Council President. Just want to reiterate how grateful I am to be part of this body that upholds so strongly a vision of human rights and equity for all people. Just want to say that last night, members of our Children and Youth Committee, joined by the Council President, specifically also as well, Councilman Dom, Kianada Johnson, myself, went out, and representatives from Marie Kianana Sanchez's office and Blondell Reynolds Brown, and all members of our Children and Youth Committee went out to be part of the youth count, which was a specific effort to track by count, a quarterly count of the city's homeless population. Our task was to bring our Children and Youth Committee members together to specifically look at the situation around homeless youth. I think a lot of us have a lot to learn about the situation and the issue. We're trying to track it. We'll take it very seriously. But just wanted to extend my gratitude to the members of council who are taking, and the members of the committee who are taking this issue very seriously and hope to have more information on that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. There being no additional speeches, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, February 4, 2016, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It has been moved in probably second that the council stand adjourned until Thursday, February 4, 2016, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you all very much.